Yeah, can't continue to operate like 1970. In 1980, we just can't, can't afford it. I would venture to say that some of the stuff that went on doesn't even happen.
Let the record show at six o'clock, we'll call our meeting to order. Sarah, will you give us the roll call please?
Eddie Gokunhour?
Here.
Linda Barnhart?
Present.
Eric Vaughn?
Here.
Fifty-nine North?
Present.
And Lloyd?
Present.
Dan O'Gant?
Here.
Nick Deal?
Eric Smith?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum present. We have three public hearings. So, we will begin those public hearings shortly. Right now, we have approval of the agenda.
Motion approved.
Okay, motion by Mr. Goff to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gokunhour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Next, we have Sunshine Law Speakers. Anybody sign up for that? Okay. Need a motion... Oh, we'll just go on for them. Sorry. Okay, we need approval of the meeting minutes.
Make motion for the minutes.
Motion by Mr. Gant.
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstention due to absence.
Okay, let the record show there's one abstention by Mr. Vaughn due to absence. Minutes are approved. Okay, we will begin our public hearings now. And the first item is Highview Estates.
Yes, we have a request for final plat approval. The project is Highview Estates, Phase Two, Lots Six through Ten and Seventeen through Twenty-two. The file number is two-one-zero-five-dash-one-six-seven. The developer is J. Hess Group. The surveyor is Roberts Land Surveying. Hedgesville District, Map Forty, Parcel Twenty-eight. The parcel is located on Thatcher Road, approximately three-quarters of a mile from intersection with Dry Run Road. The developer proposes eleven single-family lots on approximately thirty-three acres to be served by private well and septic. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of three-hundred-two-thousand-five-hundred-eighty-two dollars and forty cent. The plat is to be released upon receipt of surety and completed developer's agreement.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone representing the project?
Yes, Mike Roberts representing the project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roberts. Like I said, this is a public hearing for Highview Estates. If you have questions that you'd like to make known this evening, this is your opportunity to ask you come forward, state your name, your address, and any comments you might have regarding this project.
My name is Kristi Leagle. I live in the Mountain Press subdivision of Thatcher Road, right down the street from these houses that are being built. I'd like to know... I live at two-twenty-seven Chesswick Drive. I've seen the houses that they've started. I'd like to know the total number of houses. And it looks like that means, is it going to be that many driveways coming out on the Thatcher Road? Although some houses look like they're being built behind the others, so I don't know if it's a shared driveway or not. I'd like to know the total number of houses and how many driveways are going to be coming on the Thatcher. It looks like there's blind spots on Thatcher, but I'm just curious how many driveways.
Okay. We have before us this evening, it looks like eleven, single-family lots on thirty-three acres. Mr. Roberts, you want to address the driveway situation?
And how many from the first phase were only not discussed that week? They were discussing the second phase?
We can only discuss the phase that we're talking, we have before us this evening.
Yes, to address the fur of concern, there's only one lot that has a single driveway entrance onto Thatcher Road. All the other lots are accessed via... Four lots per subdivision street. Each of those streets have had entrance permits. There's not a doubt about it. There are actually pipe-sten lots that have drainage on the road on Thatcher Road, but the actual driveway is a common driveway in four lots for access. That limits the amount of entrances on two. Now, I think for this section, there's three pipe-sten driveways that access Thatcher Road. I'll give you just one by memory.
Three driveways for eleven lots.
Yes.
That's what it looks like, yeah.
Could there be... May I ask your question here?
Okay, are there any other comments from the public regarding Highview Estates?
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Okay. Let the record show that we finished the public hearing. A motion by Mr. Gant and second by Mr. Goff to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of the staff or of Mr. Roberts?
I do. I know in the past, there have been some drainage runoff issues that I understand that some of those have been corrected. Am I correct in understanding that?
I cannot speak to the complete drainage issue problem. I know that after the previous meeting where they caught up, an Asbeld survey was completed. That was submitted to lead, the county engineer, and I believe the public service district that covers what a runoff. I do not know what actions taken on the submission of the Asbeld plans for the pond, solar management pond and runoff swale associated with it.
But there has been additional work done, correct?
I personally cannot speak to that.
Okay.
Looks like Mr. Smith's back there rubbing his mustache or trying to say something. I'm not sure what he's doing.
You guys...
Relax. Does that relax you?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. Yes, I was out to Highview this morning. We did have a meeting with them approximately a week ago with some of the earthwork contractors out there. Brian and I did, the director. They did do some work. There is a ditch now cut, well-defined. I did see part of the Asbeld survey, but it has not been submitted into the system yet for us to review. But what we did find out, there is a discrepancy between the grades that were shown on the drawing and the grades that they shot out there. Once we found that discrepancy, that kind of put things in order. And we instructed the contractor to hold certain elevations and discard others. And it seems to, I mean, from what they have started, it seems to be done. It still is a work in progress, mind you, but it's definitely going to help keep the water off there.
Good. Thank you.
And it's not going to be running on to anybody else's property?
Hopefully not. I mean, the issue with the culvert still remains. It's still, you know, a DOH issue. I have heard nothing from DOH.
Does that surprise you?
Excuse me?
Does that surprise you?
No.
Has anybody contacted the...
We've done, we've... I've communicated with them now six times or tried to. But definitely where the contractor has it is in a much better place than where it was a week ago. That I will tell you.
Are we communicating with the DOH in written form, email or something?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not just trying to call them and not answering?
No, ma'am. It's insufficient.
Okay. All right. Okay.
There are no more questions. I'll make the motion. We accept staff recommendation to grant final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in amount of three-hundred-two-thousand-five-hundred-eighty-two dollars and forty cents. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety and completed developer's agreement.
Second.
Have a motion, Mr. Gant. Second by Mr. Gokunhour.
Mr. Goff.
Goff, okay. By Mr. Goff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item for public hearing is South Brook, Section One.
This is a request for final plat approval. The project is South Brook, Section One, Phase One, Lots One through Five, Eight through Twelve, Fifty-three through Fifty-eight, Seventy-four through Eighty-one, Ninety-four through Ninety-nine, and Townhouse Lots One through Fifteen. The file number is two-one-zero-seven-dash-two-four-six. The developer is Chandler's Glen LLC. The engineer is Gordon. It's in the Mill Creek Tax District, Map Three, Parcel Nine. The property is located on Shirely Road, County Route Thirty-four over Two, approximately point-three miles north of Hatchery Road, County Route Eleven over Eight. This phase proposes forty-five residential lots, thirty single-family detached and fifteen single-family attached on approximately fifteen acres to be served by public water and sewer. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of one million eight thousand thirty dollars. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety and completed developer's agreement.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project?
I'm going to recuse myself.
Let the record show that Mr. Smith is recusing due to conflict of interest. Hello?
Jason Gerhardt for Gordon.
Thank you. This is a public hearing for South Brook, Section One, Phase One. If you have questions or comments regarding this project, please come forward, state your name, your address, and any questions you might have.
Make a motion. Public hearing closed. Second.
Okay, let the record show that there's no one to speak from the public. I have a motion by Mr. Gokunhour. Second by Mr. Goff to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Gerhardt or of the staff?
There are no questions. I'll make the motion. We accept staff recommendation, grant a final plat approval contingent upon surety in amount of one million eight thousand thirty dollars. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety and completed developer's agreement.
Okay, have a motion by Mr. Gant.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gokunhour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Final plat is released upon surety. Thank you. Okay, the next public hearing. Let the record show that Mr. Smith is back in meeting. The next item for public hearing is Kunkel Edition.
Yes, this is a request for waiver. Kunkel Edition filed two-one-zero-nine-dash-three-three-one tied to two-one-zero-six-dash-two-zero-four. The developer is GGCMLLC. The engineer is Painter Lewis. It's located in the Opekken Tax District, Map Ten C, Parcel Sixty-three. This project is located in the northwest corner of the intersection of Joshua Drive and US Route Eleven, Williamsport Pike. This project proposes seventy-two apartment units, that's six buildings, on approximately three-point-seven acres to be served by public water and sewer. The developer is requesting a waiver to Section Eight-O-One, Table Eight-Dash-One-A, Off-Street Parking of the Berkeley County Subdivision Ordinance Two Thousand Nine, requiring one-hundred-ninety-eight parking spaces. The developer is proposing one-hundred-ninety-one parking spaces. Engineers' recommendation, the current subdivision ordinance, Section Eight-O-One, Table Eight-Dash-One-A, which was amended January tenth, Two Thousand Thirteen, requires multifamily housing to provide two-and-a-half spaces per unit, plus ten percent for guests, plus one for each employee. At seventy-two units and a minimum of one employee, maintenance worker, the required number of spaces is one-hundred-ninety-nine. The proposed sketch plan provides only one-hundred-ninety-one spaces and eight space deficiency. Based on a total of one-hundred-ninety-nine spaces, six accessible spaces are required with one being then accessible. Engineering recommends denial of the parking waiver request as Section Eight-O-One of the subdivision ordinance provided for adequate usable parking for multifamily dwellings. Reducing the minimum required parking would cause residents to park off-site on streets or on other parking areas. Staff concurs with engineering recommendation and recommends denial of the parking waiver request. And I'd like to add that we received contact this afternoon that there was no one to represent the project. They did let us know ahead of time.
Okay. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak from the public regarding this project?
We'll public hearing be closed.
Second.
Let the record show that there's no comments from the public. I have a motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gokunhour, to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions that you'd like to present?
Was this letter sent after they called and said they couldn't make the meeting? Or was it sent...
No, that was sent ahead of the waiver request. It was an inappropriate submission, so then they went through and requested the appropriate way to application.
Gotcha.
Thinking, Mr. Members, do you have additional questions?
Mr. Smith? I think it... Doug? Did you know the history on this?
Would you tell us the history?
Yeah, I mean, is this the original owner? Or has it been sold?
I can't say for sure, but it was by the regulations, it would be the dollar. It was the... But I could give thanks to that story.
I just get heartburn when we give somebody a waiver, approve a waiver, and then we take it away from them.
Do you think they may have had a waiver granted to them before?
Yeah. Actually, I don't think they did.
Well, they didn't have a waiver, but they had an approval. Was it designed that way in June twenty-first, Two Thousand Sixteen?
Well, the problem with it is, is they did that back in the early Two Thousand's. The parking regulations were what they were today. And in between one of those agreements, the parking regulations changed. They got caught up in it without having the project started. Then came back in, and down the path.
Well, it was changed in Two Thousand...
What were they, they should have...
Well, it was changed in Two Thousand Thirteen, the parking. And then they got an approval in Two Thousand Sixteen. That's what I'm talking about.
I believe that was the extension. So that they...
They never came back in.
The project was O-four. And it's been stretched since. Since they expired, they have, that's why they have to come through with the extension.
And they would have had to come back for some more following these things.
Waiting for a motion.
I'll make a motion. We accept staff recommendations to deny the waiver.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Lewis to accept the staff recommendation, and that is to deny the waiver. Second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, that concludes our public hearings. Now, we're going to do the preliminary plan approval. And the first project is Project Nova.
Can you excuse me a second just one?
Okay.
This is a request for preliminary plan approval. Project Project Nova filed two-one-zero-one-dash-zero-one-three. The developer is Jefferson Business Park Associates. The engineer is Gordon. It's found in the Opekken District, Map Six, Parcels Thirty-four-point-one, Thirty-four-point-four, and Thirty-seven. The property is located northwest of US Route Eleven, Williamsport Pike, and south of Mid-Atlantic Parkway. This project proposes the development of a two-hundred-and-four-thousand-nine-hundred-eighty-two square-foot industrial warehouse with car maintenance stations and seventy-seven acres of distribution lot and car storage to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On August twenty-fifth, Two Thousand Twenty-One, County Engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of approval stating that a review of the above-mentioned project was complete and found to be in compliance with the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends advancement of the preliminary plan.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Hello, I'm Ben with Gordon.
Ben Svetlow for Gordon.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Again, this is a public hearing. If you have questions or comments regarding the project, now's your opportunity.
I'll pass this on.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry.
That was again.
Okay. Thinking, Commission Members, do you have questions regarding the project?
The question I have is that stormwater management issues are certainly being addressed on this property.
Yes. We actually got a comment from the DOH that we were, you know, the whole work volume was... Seemed to be really taking the existing condition seriously and trying to make it better.
Yeah, I know you're downstream.
Yeah, we're downstream. I've been...
And the reason I ask that, I'm concerned about your property, because I know you'll take care of that property. I'm concerned about downstream, get further, you know, crossing Mid-Atlantic over Route Eleven or on at least the Route Eleven. And it's already been plagued by flooding. So that's my own concern, just that hopefully what you're going to do there, make it better for everybody. I hope.
That is the hope. That's what our design shows. You know, we reduce the flows well beyond the requirements, you know, considering our topography, which really creates a huge reduction. So, we're compliant with that. And we also oriented our facilities in a way to improve what's going on with the surrounding, especially the residential lots up against Route Eleven. To kind of work that for through our site, I guess their property, like it was in the existing condition.
Thank you.
That's taken into consideration, the Berkeley Station area?
Yes.
If there are further questions, I'll make the motion. We accept staff recommendation. Preliminary plan meets requirements of subdivision ordinance. Advance the preliminary plan.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Gokunhour, to accept staff recommendation and to advance the preliminary plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Harland Springs Storage.
We have a request for preliminary plan approval. Harland Springs Storage Unit filed two-one-zero-two-dash-zero-six-seven. The, excuse me, the developer is ILA Properties. The engineer is Chief Road Engineering. It's in the Hedgesville District, Map Thirty-four, Parcel Seven Point Six. This project is located at the intersection of Hedgesville Road, West Virginia Route Nine, and Harland Springs Road, West Virginia Route One. This project proposes twenty-two commercial storage buildings, one-thousand-three-hundred-fifty units, on approximately nineteen acres. Water and sewer utilities are not proposed. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On July twenty-sixth, Two Thousand Twenty-One, County Engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of approval stating that a review of the above-mentioned project was complete and found to be in compliance with the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends advancement of the preliminary plan.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project, the same?
Yes, Mike Roberts, representing the project.
Thinking, Commission Members, do you have questions or comments?
There are no questions. I'll make a motion. We accept staff recommendation, advance the preliminary plan.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Goff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. The preliminary plan is to be advanced.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is final plat determination of Red Hill, Phase Ten.
This is a request for final plat determination for Red Hill, Section One, Phase Ten, Lots One through Twelve and Fifty-five through Sixty-four. File number is Two Thousand Ten-dash-two-seventy-two. The developers, P. Coger Investments. Surveyors, Roberts Land Surveying. It's located in the Hedgesville District, Map Twenty-eight, Parcel Forty-seven, on West Virginia County Route Four Ridge Road. The final plat proposes the development of twenty-two single-family lots on approximately four-point-five acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested for this phase. County Engineer Doug Smith issued a letter on July twelfth, Two Thousand Twenty-One, stating that a review of this project was completed and found to be in compliance. Final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the November fifteenth, Two Thousand Twenty-One Planning Commission meeting.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Mike Roberts representing the project.
Okay, thank you. Thinking, Commission Members, do you have questions? Mr. Roberts or the staff?
Okay, no. I make motion. We accept staff recommendation for final plat determination and advertising of public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the November fifteenth, Two Thousand Twenty-One.
Second.
I have a motion, Mr. Gokunhour, second by Mr. Gant, to accept staff recommendation, that is to hold a public hearing for final plat determination on November fifteenth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Berkeley Ridge, Section Two, Phase One.
This is a request for final plat determination. Berkeley Ridge, Section Two, Phase One, Lots Two-seventy-eight to Three-seventeen and Four-hundred to Four-twenty-five. The file number is two-one-zero-eight-dash-three-zero-nine. The developers, Panhandle Homes of Berkeley County, and the engineers, Foxen Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, Map Fourteen, Parcel Twenty-six-point-three, on the east side of the existing Berkeley Ridge subdivision, north of Spring Mills Middle School. This phase proposes sixty-six townhome lots on approximately twelve-point-three acres to be served by public water and sewer. On November second, Two Thousand Twenty, the developer was granted a waiver to the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance, Article Eight, Section Eight-O-One, Table Eight-Dash-One-A, Eight, requiring three parking spaces per dwelling unit with a minimum of one space per dwelling unit being off-site.
The county engineer Doug Smith issued a letter on October 8, 2021, stating that a review of this project was completed and found to be in compliance with the subdivision ordinance. Final plat meets the requirements of the ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the November 15, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
Do we have any queries for contact?
Do we have someone to represent the project?
Good evening, Steve Sianovich with Foxen Associates, representing the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Plenary commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Sianovich or the staff?
I have any questions, I'll make a motion, we accept staff recommendations for final plat determination and advertising of public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the November 15, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Gokenhour, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant final plat approval at a public hearing on November 15. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Timberwood Estates, oh, sorry, Timberwood East.
This is a request for final plat determination for Timberwood East, Phase 1, lots 1 through 16. File number is 2105-166, tied to 011-19. The developers, TNC Investments LLC. The engineer is Roberts Land Surveying. It's located in the Mill Creek District, map 10, parcel 46, on Three Run Road, one mile southeast of the intersection with West Virginia Route 51. The developer proposes 16 single-family lots on approximately 13.97 acres to be served by public water and sewer. At the March 26, 2019 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted an exception to section 705 requiring sidewalks. County engineer Doug Smith issued a letter on October 8, 2021, stating that a review of this project was completed and found to be in compliance with the subdivision ordinance. The final plat meets the requirements of the ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the November 15, 2021 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Do we have someone to represent the project?
Yes. Mike Roberts, representing the project.
Okay. Plenary commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Roberts?
I make a motion, we accept staff recommendation for final plat determination and advertising of public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at November 15, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Gant, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to have public hearings for final plat approval on November 15. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a request for preliminary final plat approval, Max Ripley.
This is a request for prelim final plat approval for Max Ripley, file number 2107-283. The developers, Max Ripley, the surveyors, Roberts Land Surveying. It's located in the Opeckin District, map 8, parcel 8, at the intersection of Jacobs Road and Dede Lane. The project proposes approximately 1.44 acre lot and another approximately 1.7 acre residue to be served by private well and septic. A waiver to section 305.4.1 requiring a two-acre minimum lot size was granted on April 5, 2021. The county engineer Doug Smith issued approval on September 30, 2021, stating that a review of this project had been completed and was found to be in compliance. The project's found to be complete and compliant with the 2009 Berkeley County subdivision regulations, and therefore staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plat.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts, again.
Yes, here, representing the project.
Okay. Plenary commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Roberts or the staff? I have a question. Has the Health Department granted septic approvals and well approvals on both of these lots?
Yes.
Have you submitted that to us?
Yes.
Okay. So both lots have been approved by the Health Department? Okay.
There are no further questions, I'll make the motion, we accept staff recommendation and approve the preliminary final plat.
Motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Goff. Yes?
Yes.
To accept the staff recommendation and to grant preliminary final plat approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay, the last item on the agenda is Archer's Rock.
This is a replat approval for Archer's Rock, Phase 3A, lots 301 to 336. File number 2108-290. The developers, DR Acquisitions LLC, and the engineer is Gordon. It's located in the Falling Waters District, map 16A, parcel 49, approximately 700 feet east of Harland Springs Road on Knocking Point Boulevard. This is a replat of Section 1, parcel B1, and Lot 13A. This replat proposes 36 townhomes on approximately five acres to be served by public water and sewer. The replat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends replat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $658,680, and plat to be released upon receipt of that surety.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project?
My name's Cameron Heath, I'm here on behalf of DR Acquisitions.
I didn't catch your last name?
Heath.
Spell it.
H-E-A-T-H.
Oh, okay, I know that.
I thought you said Keith.
Plenary commission members, do you have questions of Ms. Heath or of the staff? Were these always townhouses for this?
This was cleaning up that subdivision after Dan Ryan.
It was originally a.
Do you agree with him, or does he agree with you?
I agree, it was originally a road that we applied the townhomes on.
Remember Matt Powell's in here?
Yeah, I do, but I wanted to hear it from him. Any questions? Any motion?
Hang on one second. During that discussion, there was some discussion about a berm on the back of those properties. Is that correct? Is that one?
Yep.
Did that get addressed and cleaned up?
So the berm was always part of the development. I can't speak to exactly when or if that's going to be removed. I know there was homeowners complaining about that, but once the development is finished, it's going to be how the plans work, so I can't speak to when or where that berm is.
But it is going to move?
I can't answer that for sure, to be honest.
I just remember that.
Can someone from Gordon answer that question? Since we have Gordon people in the audience?
Oh, wonderful, love.
Yeah.
I wasn't at the last hearing, so I may not be fully aware of what the question is. But are, was there a berm that they wanted to have moved? Is that the question?
That's kind of what I remember there.
Either removed or properly finished.
Graded.
Yes.
Yeah, probably just a mound left. So our grading plan that we prepared for the townhomes smoothes out all the grading through that area and basically gets rid of any of that mound, obviously, for the ones that left in unfinished condition. So, because they thought it was going to be a road, whenever they left it in, it's cursed. So that'll get rid of all that stuff, and it'll just be the main backyards.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion, we accept staff recommendation, replat, replat approval contingent upon receipt of surety amount of $658,680, plat to be released upon receipt of surety. Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Gokenhour, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to approve the replat and surety in the amount of $658,680. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay, that basically concludes the business for tonight. There was a staff meeting of our committee that we appointed at the last meeting. Do you want to give us a little update on that?
Yes, I can do that. We met last week. All of the appointed participants were in attendance at that meeting, and we went through the list. I made a list of all of the people that had commented on the ordinance, and we sorted through that a little bit and tackled some of the easier items first. I think we were able to go through about four or five of the people that had commented and addressed those items. Some included simpler things like the hydrogeologic study and people saying that they wanted that, that they were just looking through the ordinance and couldn't see the appendices, so was noting that we needed to add that. Others were that they had no issues, so that was an easy one to just check off. And then just other general items from the surveyors. We focused on surveyors at the meeting that had commented.
So there were no changes made?
We came to consensus on certain items, and then once we go through all of the comments, I'll put together a summary of what the outcome is.
Oh, okay, okay. And then you have another meeting scheduled in a week?
Yes, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday?
Mm-hmm. Wednesday afternoon.
One o'clock?
I believe so.
Okay. Plenary commission members, thank you for your service.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by.
Sorry about that, Dan.
I have a motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gant, to adjourn at 6:00, at 7:45, 46. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.